... please stand up for President Richard. The flag of the United States of America and its republic.
The republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Please remain standing for the official response. Can I have please roll call for the council?
Roll call, Councilmember Baptista. Councilmember Aguilar. Councilmember King. Mayor Pro Temp Garcia. Mayor Pro Temp Garcia. Mayor Sama. For the record, Mayor Pro Temp Garcia is non-attendant, but his absence is excused. Planning Commission roll call. Commissioner Rendich Duddy. Commissioner Steve Bassi. Commissioner Adarun Ba.
Present.
Alternate Commissioner Jason Ross. Alternate Commissioner Wapender King. Vice Chair Francisco Mendoza Gonzalez. Chair Robert Wallace. For the record, Commissioner Rendich Duddy is non-attendant.
Hey, Monica, I dropped out just when you were taking attendance. This is Rendich, I'm online.
That was Rendich.
Good citizens comment, members of the public who do this committee will be given the same time allotment for comments for three minutes as normally allowed for meeting subjects to be presented in the next order in 29 minutes. If you wish to address the citizens' comments, please come through and identify yourself. Mr. Ramirez, we have to have a moment to. Hi, I would like to have a moment. Can you please identify yourself? Kevin Kimbrough, City of Livingston employee. Okay, you know what I should have done, is any other staff that's online, not in
Yes, Anthony Caveria, Public Works.
Public Works, okay. This is citizens' comment, so, yeah, hold on. Okay, go ahead please, and identify yourself. Okay, hi, my name's Kevin Kimbrough, I worked in this for six years. I have recently gotten a new job offer, and I will be leaving the City of Livingston this Friday, but I just wanted to thank the city and the council and the mayor for all the opportunities that I've gotten, and Anthony and Jose Ramirez for giving me opportunity to provide and grow and become a better worker, and I just wanted to say thank you to the City of Livingston.
Hey, can you hear me okay, Kevin?
Yeah.
First of all, I just want to thank you for all your years of service. We very much appreciate it. I know that Anthony has really appreciated all your hard work. We hate to see you go, but I, we understand that there's a great opportunity for you, and we want to see you continue to grow and do great stuff, and I also want to thank you for taking the time to call in, and thank staff and the council for your service.
Well, I too want to say thank you, Kevin, for your hard work for the city, and we really appreciate it, and we wish you the best at whatever you do. Thank you. Anybody else that wants to comment or choose to comment? You have not, do you have a phone number? Why, please? Yes, that's going to be. Just a reminder to everybody that's not speaking, please mute your mics, because you don't want to have anything you don't want to hear.
So I just speak into this. Colette Alverna, PO Box 255, Livingston, California. City Council, Planning Commission, thank you for allowing me to speak. I question the timing of this meeting, because your general plan is supposed to encourage public comment, and we're in COVID-19, where public is restricted and moving, there's only a few people that can come, this isn't the best time to be having the meeting. I think there are people groups that should be contacted, including everyone that participated in the last general plan update. There was a whole binder of comments, and all of those people should be contacted. I also think you should make a significant effort to reach our Mennonite community. Their religious beliefs prevent them from participating and voting in that, yet they're an important part of our society and our city, and so we need to reach out to them and go to them and ask them what they think in Phil. I think we should communicate clearly and fully what the general plan will be. If the general plan causes a road directly and indirectly impact, if the general plan causes a road in front of someone's house to be increased by 10 feet or 20 feet, that person, that resident, should know they will eventually lose 10 feet of their yard. We also should communicate about the rezoning. If you rezone a house that's residential to now commercial, how will that interfere with their ability to get a home loan to improve their house, or to add on to their house? All of these things should be looked at, and we need to communicate clearly. I also respectfully request that our land and property be kept out of the City of Livingston's proposed general plan. We do not wish to be part of the city, and please stay off our land. The first question, another question I have regarding the general plan is the master plan. Are you using the master plan from the court set aside proposed City of Livingston general plan from the past? And some of those numbers in the proposed master, the master plans of that proposed court set aside general plan, their numbers were inaccurate. The California Department of Finance has a population number. That number was misquoted and misused in the plan. That number, that population number, is what was used to base calculations on for the plan working in the city. So there's an inherent flaw when your factual, the numbers that we're basing, or mathematical computations are, is wrong. I brought this to the City of Livingston numerous times, over and over again, and I have it documented and date stamped. I also brought it to the firm that was doing the master plan. The firm threw the City of Livingston over, under the bus, because they put a footnote in it saying, "These numbers were provided to us by the City of Livingston," but they weren't correct. The master plans had different numbers in it. You get the water master plan, you get the wastewater master plan, you get another master plan, the numbers weren't matching. Pick one number and keep it consistent through all your master plans. It's like building a house and saying, "Well, this stud will be eight and a quarter inch, and another stud will be seven and a half inches." You need to have continuity so your master plans can flow. So I'm concerned about the master plans that are being used. Also, there's some changes since then. One example is the increase in the E&amp;J Galway crushing plant, put a lot more traffic on the road. That is the largest crushing plant west of the Rockies, and I think it's even larger than that. So the previous master plans do not have the current conditions, so my question is, what master plans are being used? It is also the duty and the responsibility for every city council member and every planning commissioner to read these documents. They're hard to understand, I get it. Ask questions, ask questions, ask questions. If you have not read your agenda, if you haven't read the master plan, table it until you can. You're looking at a document that will impact the citizens for 40 years. Really important we get this right. Paper is cheap. Redoing a road, you're looking at millions of dollars, or hundreds of thousands of dollars, depending upon how it is. If you need clarification, ask. It's time to understand. Also, listen to the public. It's time to pay attention to the public. When you have a citizen that's lived in the community for 50 years, they have boots on the ground, they know.
Okay, sorry. This is a overview of the, this is a workshop to get everybody familiar with what's going on, who's making the decisions. All of those questions you have, we're going to ask the questions, we'll have the answers. At this time, Mr. Ramirez, if you'd like to come forward.
Honorable Mayor, Council, and Planning Commissioners, thank you very much, and the public for being here. As the mayor alluded to, this is actually the very beginning of a long process that's going to take about two years. And all your comments that were, that you provided, Mrs. Alverna, we very much appreciate those. We understand that a lot of things happened in the past for the previous general plan, and that's one of the reasons why we're doing this process openly, transparent, and we are engaging a lot of stakeholders, and this, again, is the very first joint meeting that is going to take place. So, as it relates specifically to the master plan, we're definitely not going to be using the master plans from the past, and we don't need to go over the reasons why. But for those new council members that don't know, a lot of these master plans projected the City of Livingston having about 100,000 people, okay? And so, with that in mind, we have to set aside funds to address each specific master plan, but in the big scheme of things, we need to get started, because this is a process that takes a while, and we want to engage our different partners, whether it be the Farm Bureau, whether it be our planning commissioners, whether it be a lot of our landowners in the area, different stakeholders, community groups, because more input, better, and it will allow us to get to where we as a community want to go. So I appreciate everybody being here, and especially those people that are online for participating. So with that, Mayor, I'll turn it over to Mr. Jim Harness, who's our council.
Thank you, Mr. Harness, before you begin, just for the folks that are watching on YouTube and are not pulling it in, please remember that between what we're talking here and what you see on YouTube is really about a minute or so delay. So it's better that if you're looking at comment, is to turn off the volume on your TV or the computer, and use your phone to listen to the conversation, and make it a little smoother, otherwise there's a delay. And for the planning commissioners that are here, most now, that are here and calling in, this is an informal workshop, so you don't have to wait for the presentation to end to ask a question. So, planning commissioners, if you have a handoff, if you don't understand something you have a question, just raise your hand, I'll just give a question, and we'll be more than happy to give the answer at that time. So you don't have to wait for the presentation to end. So, Mr. Harness, go ahead, please.
I'm the owner and owner of Minter Harnish, a business consulting firm, of the general plan project. We have a lot of team, some of the folks in our office are small, some are raised, got some children's problems, and, well, I'm telling you that it's my, now, part of the
That's fine, because you had it on. Okay, can you hear me now? Okay, good, thank you. Interesting times we live in, isn't it? I couldn't understand you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, oh, that's not good, because I'm getting an echo in Okay, let's try it again. Can you hear me? Okay, and I don't have an echo, so we're good now. Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, and Chair of the Commission, and planning commissioners, my name is Jim Harness. I'm the principal and owner of Minter Harnish, a planning consulting firm based in Sacramento. We've been in business since 1985. I founded the firm with my now-retired partner, Larry Minter, and we specialize in doing general plans, housing elements, and zoning codes. We do other things as well. We work a lot in the Valley. I'm actually a native of Fresno, went to Fresno State. My partner Larry actually went to, grew up in Bakersfield, so we have an affinity for the Valley, we've done a lot of work here. We've also worked with the COGS, we've done a lot of work on the Valley Blueprint and the Valley Green Print in the past, so quite familiar. We helped the city do its last housing element, the one you're operating under now. We've worked in Merced County on their general plan and their zoning code, so we're very familiar with the area and familiar with the topic. It's my first and greatest interest in planning, is doing general plans. Working with me is our principal planner, Rick Russ. He's been working in the field for about 35 years, and he is the project director and is working, kind of like a project advisor. Amy Yang, who's the assistant project manager, and I are day-to-day project managers, and we're also assisted by Raul Gonzalez, who's one of our new planners. Helping us also, we've teamed with two other firms, Rincon Consultants, they're actually based in Ventura, they have an office in Fresno, and they are providing the environmental work on the project, and then GHD Consultants, which is a transportation consulting firm, and their office is in Visalia, and they're working on the transportation circulation related part of the project. And then we're also working with your team of city staff. We have conference calls, project management conference calls every other week with Jose and his team, and Randy Hatch is very active on this team, providing us direction and giving us feedback on the work that we're doing on a very regular basis. So tonight, I want to accomplish a few things. I'd like to give you an overview of general plans and the general plan requirements for California, talk about the process that we're going through here, talk about the schedule and the different phases of the project. Third, talk about the different aspects of our community engagement program, and then lastly, provide an opportunity for you to give us some initial thoughts, and the public, on issues going into the general plan, or the major opportunities in Livingston, or the issues we should be addressing in the planning process. So the overview of the general plan. What's a general plan? It's a long-range plan for growth and development for a community. Every city, town, and county in California is required to have a general plan. California's actually one of the few states that requires a general or a comprehensive plan. Many other states have them, but this is the only, one of the few states that requires every city and county to have them. It's, the general plans are typically organized by element, and we'll talk a little bit more about that, and the minute elements are really, it's another way of saying chapter. And the purpose, one of the key purposes of the general plan is, is a document that represents the vision of the future for a community here in Livingston. So, what's the focus? This is an interesting word, focus on what we're doing in the general plan. In my view, it's the only time a city or county has the opportunity to talk about this full broad range of issues at one time. Talk about land use, transportation, sustainability, the environment, housing, environmental quality, environmental justice. It's a chance for the community to come together and talk about what their hopes and expectations and aspirations for the community are, and for you as decision-makers to make sometimes some hard decisions, because while each one of these topics has maybe an ideal aspiration, it's hard, as you know, when you're doing the budget especially, to fund everything and find the right balance for all of the competing interests in the community, and so this is a chance for you and the community to come together and essentially prioritize what you'd like to see going forward, whether the key issues, what are your key goals and guiding principles. So this is my former partner Larry's favorite planning diagram. This is essentially the entire planning process described in one graphic. The general plan forms the basis for everything else that you do, for your zoning, for your subdivision, for your building permits, the general plan is the starting point for this. The general plan is supposed to be general, as its name is known, or set implies. The zoning, for example, is a much more specific tool that you use. The general plan is a broader description of your expectations for, excuse me, how the city would grow. The general plan should be comprehensive, and this is back to what I said just a second ago. It should address all this full range of issues comprehensively and consistently, and typically, general plans look out ahead 15, 20, or 25 years. I have worked on plans that were ahead of 50-year time horizon, seems to me it's a little far out there, but 20 years is pretty typical, and that's what we're doing here, looking out at 2040. So, one other kind of set of requirements for a general plan is that we, it covers a planning area, and this isn't just the city limits, and it may not just be the sphere of influence, although in a number of communities, the planning area is synonymous with the sphere of influence. It's really an area of interest. What areas does the city have an interest in having some say in the future of that land, whether you would ever expect to annex and develop it? So, there's a planning area, if it's not set in stone, it's really a determination made by the city as to what area you want to look at. The other major requirement for a general plan is that it's internally consistent. Each one of the elements of the plan has to be consistent with the other elements, and each element itself has to be internally consistent. Typically, the land use element in the general plan is considered the dominant element. This is, it's dominant only in the sense that the land use issues oftentimes rise at the top as being the key issues for growth and development, but it is equal weight to the circulation element, the housing element, and others, all the other elements. So the state requires a certain number of elements to be included, and there are eight, sort of, for the San Juanquin Valley. Land use, circulation, housing conservation, open space, safety, and noise are the typical elements that have been required for many years. The San Juanquin Valley, every city and county within the San Juanquin Air Pollution Control District are required to have, in addition, an air quality element, and that's been in place since about 2000. And just recently, in the last couple of years, there's legislation that's required that an environmental justice element also be added. However, this can be a separate element, or it can be goals, policies, and programs spread throughout the rest of the document. It's not a required, we use this as a shorthand for describing the topic, which I can, I'll talk about in a minute, but it can, it's your choice as whether you want to make it a separate element or not. And then, of course, at your discretion, you can include elements that address any other issues, park recreation, childcare, we've done some projects of childcare elements. Merced County has a water element, an agricultural element. These are all topics that more or less get addressed in the general plan, but you can have a separate element that kind of represents what you think is the most important topic. So if there's a subject that you feel needs to be addressed separately, then you can do that. Again, it's up to you. So, since you adopted your last general plan, there have been a great number of, oh, let me go back to the elements, there's one thing I wanted to mention. The housing element is the only element that is subject to essentially state review and approval. All the other elements have stated requirements in the state law that you have to address. You can address them pretty much any way you want to feel that they should be addressed, just as long as you cover all those topics. The housing element, as you probably are aware, has very specific and detailed requirements. And before you can finally adopt a housing element, this, the Department of Housing, Community, and Development has to review it, approve it, and ultimately certify it. So it's a only element. It's also on a separate formalized track, has to be updated every eight years or four years in some circumstances. And your cycle's coming up here in a couple of years. So it's, it's a different, has a kind of a different standing than the other elements, but it's still equal weight. So a lot of things have changed since you adopted your last general plan. Of course, all of the climate change issues and resilience are all issues that need to be addressed in the general plan. Environmental justice is the newest requirement, and this essentially is, requires cities and counties that have disadvantaged communities that are as defined in the SB one thousand, which are essentially low-income communities of color that are just proportionately impacted by environmental characteristics, pesticide, groundwater pollution. There's about twenty criteria. Most of the San Juanquin Valley, most of the cities and counties have some environmental justice communities, Livingston does. And we'll, we'll talk a lot more about that as the project goes along. Travel consultation is largely a CEQA issue, but it affects the general plan. There are more formal requirements to consult with Native American tribes. UCA miles travel is an issue that you'll hear a lot about. It's a new metric for measuring traffic. It's a CEQA metric, not a policy. I don't want to get too far into that, but we'll talk more about that as the project goes along. And, oh, complete streets was, that legislation's adopted about twelve years ago. And this really is a focus on assuring that your, all the streets in the city are suitable for bicyclists, pedestrians, as well as vehicles, transit, the elderly, the youth, and the disabled. So it's a holistic view of the circulation system within cities. And of course, the housing element will really be the focus of this, but as you are aware, there's just incredibly increased hype and interest in housing supply and affordability in California. And the housing element's been largely the focus of that, as well as your zoning code. But well, there are, it touches most of the other elements of the plan, so we'll be looking at addressing the housing issue as well. So I'll stop here if there are any overarching questions about general plan requirements. We can come back to that. I just thought if there was something on your mind now, we could talk about it. So I wanted to spend a few, I wanted to spend a few minutes and talk about the process, what we're doing, and the schedule that we're doing it on. We've already, so we have what we call phases of a project. This is the way we organize most of our general plan updates, is in phases. And we have a series of tasks within each phase. And so we've completed Phase One, which is project initiation. We met with your staff, representatives of all the city departments. The whole consulting team came in, and we had a long discussion about the process, their role, and involvement, information sources that they had available for us to start doing our research on the background and existing conditions. And then we took a tour of the city, the key points in the city that was led, facilitated by Jose. It was a really great, really enlightened tour. We are in both Phases Two and Three right now. We're getting started, and this is one of the first steps, is to meet with you and the planning commission and the community. Do this, tell you what we're up to, give you an opportunity to give us some initial thoughts. There'll be plenty of other opportunities, but we like any highlights now. We've also built a website that's live, so it's have a project website that I invite you all to look at. It's, right now, it's just populated primarily with frequently asked questions, some background about the general plan. But as the project goes along, it will be the primary place for the community to go to stay informed on the project. All meeting notices will be on the site. For example, this PowerPoint will be on the site. So any presentations, any materials, any reports that we prepare will be posted on the site. And there'll be an opportunity to sign up. We have an email list. And there'll be an opportunity through that website to sign up and get notices of every document, meeting, any opportunity to participate in the process. So it's kind of information central for the general plan. The website name is LivingstonCityTwentyFour.com. LivingstonCityTwentyFour, oh, twentyforty.com. And I'll talk a little bit in a few minutes. I'll go through all the other outreach things that we've been building either now or as the project goes along. We're also in the process of doing an existing conditions workbook. So we've been doing research the last couple of months, gathering information. We and our other team members are preparing, which will ultimately be a an easy-to-read documentation of our starting point for the general plan. Historically, this step has been a fairly dry, information-data-heavy piece of work that is useful for us and our work, but not very useful to inform the community about the background of the planning process. So this will be a workbook that will be easily readable. We are also preparing a series of online story maps that will go along with this. So it will be a good introduction to the topics that we're addressing and the information that we're using to address those topics. So that should be, I think we're due to have a draft of the workbook, the city staff will review late June. And then ultimately, it'll be public probably in July. We are planning, it's not quite scheduled yet, but we are planning on the first community open house where we will solicit input in a much more active way than tonight, through exercises and boards and that kind of thing from the community to kind of kick off what are the assets, the opportunities, and issues that we should be addressing. Because of COVID-nineteen challenges that we have to the community engagement process, we're still working on options on how to do that. And of course, some of this will be governed by the, how the state opens up and what opportunities we have to engage face-to-face.
That's a question.
Yep.
Is your mic on? Can we get the next water bill? Yeah, can we get the next water bill that comes out? To have this website listed and what it is, so it goes to everybody.
Yeah, I'm back. You want to? Yeah, we're all, we're all ready. I'm sorry, it's a great idea. And actually, Jose suggested this as a tool that we can use throughout the project to communicate with the community. So we will get for this, for this first workshop, we're going to have a notice and water bills for everybody. So yes. So we're in the early kind of fact-finding stages now. Issues and opportunities will help us begin to kind of identify, sort through the issues. And then we'll develop some alternatives. And that's a little unknown now, to the extent to which these will be land use alternatives or policy alternatives. That'll kind of, it'll evolve over the discussions with the community and the planning commission and yourselves. And we'll have public discussion about that, public meeting. And then, let me go back. I'm going to talk about this a little bit more when we talk about community engagement. But each one of the meetings that we might have will also be connected to online exercises on the website. So we'll be using that as a tool. Now, if we are too limited in the kind of face-to-face meetings that we can have, instead of, I mean, obviously, one option is to delay the project for six months or a year, but I don't think anybody wants to do that. There are emerging great tools that you can use online for virtual workshops. We're developing some ourselves in-house. We've seen examples of some others that we think are workable. But we'll work with staff over the next two or three months to really see what's going to be the most effective way of enabling any interested resident to participate in the process and give you their opinion. Yes, sir.
I see here on the, the sheet, chart, you have a joint studies up to four. Is that kind of the number we're looking at in regards to joint studies or workshops? I know we're still working the details of the schedule, but is that something typical?
Yeah, and the joint study sessions are like this, but with you and the planning commission. And they're essentially check-ins, where we come to a certain point that we want to kind of tell you what we've heard and where we're headed, and make sure that that, that works for you as a decision-maker.
Oh, another question. Are any of these workshops or activities, community engagement activities, are they going to be in different languages, or Spanish, Punjabi?
Yeah. Spanish and Punjabi, yes. We'll have written translation and oral translation in the in-person meetings, yes. After the alternatives, we'll come back to you, and this will be a key point for the commission and the council to select what we would call a preferred alternative. And this typically is, what's the land use diagram going to look like? Where are you going to grow, and what's that growth going to look like? That's the core of picking a preferred alternative. There are other issues, policies that support this, and alter options on how you approach it will be in that mix, but that'll be a key decision-making point. So now we'll go and prepare the general plan. And I should say, we, we don't start over and create a whole new general plan from whole clock. Well, we're working with Randy and Jose right now to evaluate your current plan to identify what goals and policies and programs are still relevant, what are okay but need to be revised, and what are either outdated or unnecessary and need to be tossed. And once we get to that point, then we start building the new general plan based on the new content requirements, the new approaches to some of the policy topics. When your last plan was prepared, there wasn't a lot of discussion about climate change and sustainability. Certainly wasn't any discussion about environmental justice. And so all of those things will be new for the plan. But I just wanted to make sure you understood that, even though some people might want to toss the old plan, there's still a lot good in it, and that's what our starting point will be. And then, once we have a draft plan together, we'll prepare an environmental impact report to assess the environmental effects of that. We work closely with our environmental consultant to minimize any potential effects that they might find through their evaluation. The general plan EIR is unique in CEQA, and then EIR is in that the impacts that the EIR is assessing are impacts of you implementing the plan, the policies, and carrying out the programs. And the mitigation measures that the EIR would come up with are new or revised policies and programs. That's, that would be the mitigation. So we strive to have a self-mitigating general plan, which means that we work closely with our environmental teaming partners to look at the policies that we're developing, refine them so that they may be more effective as environmental mitigation for traffic, for air quality, and that kind of topic. And then, finally, we go through a public hearing process and review and approval. And this should all take, I know you wanted to have it done in two years. It could. But I think especially given the environment that we're working in now, it's more likely to be twenty-eight or thirty months. That's what we're planning on. And we talked about this, I think, when I was here last. The, it's pretty tough to do a comprehensive plan, have all these meetings, have the feedback with you, and do a good job in the analysis in two years. It's just, it's really pretty tough. So we're, but we're on pace. We haven't, despite some of the challenges that we're facing with the COVID-nineteen and the meetings, we're, we're on track on the same schedule. I forgot to mention, when we were talking about Phase Two, the next three days, we're going to be doing secular interviews via Zoom. We're going to talk to about twelve or fourteen community members to get their initial take on issues that we ought to be addressing. And so we're, and that's where I'm right on schedule with that. So the outreach program, this is essential to every successful general plan is to have an effective community outreach program that enables all who are interested in the project to participate and participate effectively. People, everybody won't necessarily get their own way, but if they're heard and you and the commission take into consideration the issues, that's all an individual can ask because you're elected to make the decisions. But that we, our job as consultants is to make sure that everybody knows what's going on and is able to participate to the extent that they want. So I mentioned earlier, we built a website. It's a key communication tool. We have a logo. There it is for the project. Every PowerPoint, every document that we prepare will have that logo on it, so it kind of identifies that this is all part of the same project. And I invite everybody to take a look at the website, give us your feedback. There's always opportunity to refinement if you see something you like or don't like. E-Blast, I think somebody mentioned the email list. We're working with the city staff to develop and continue to expand an email contact list. We regularly send out E-Blast. We did send one out for this meeting. The list will continue to expand as the project grows. And this is just one tool for letting folks know. We announce every meeting, availability of documents, anything that's kind of a change in the project. We use E-Blast to announce that. We'll prepare four or five newsletters over the course of the project. We have one coming out probably in a couple of months. It'll be in advance of the first community workshop. And these are intended to kind of, really to drive people to the, either to the website or to the public meetings. They provide kind of an overview of the topic that we're addressing at that point in the project and a way, a way to communicate, to express your opinion on whatever the topic is. The city has social media accounts. We work with, Jose will periodically have announcements, other information on Facebook or your other social media tools. Hold on here, drink of water, and then we'll talk about Social Pinpoint. Social Pinpoint is the tool that we use Um, social pinpoint is the tool that we use, uh, for online surveys, um, to generate additional information. Every open house, uh, that we have, we link it to the website so that if people can't come to a meeting, they can see the same information, uh, on the website and they can, if we have exercises, uh, um, use the same exercises, uh, that we do at the workshop. And then we'll periodically have, um, other surveys, um, uh, to just kind of keep introspective and, uh, keep kind of a pulse of the community on this as the project goes along. And I've already mentioned Open Houses, that's the tool we use for, uh, primary tool we use for community engagement, uh, and, uh, we have three of those, um, planned for the project. These typically, we'll have a lot of information boards, we'll have stations, um, and exercises at the stations to gather information from folks and responses to the ideas that we're developing, uh, as we go along on the project. And then finally, um, we, uh, will work with staff to have a general plan kiosk, so we have, uh, kind of a summary of the information here in City Hall. It could be in other places, library, uh, other, uh, community gathering places where we essentially have a place that will attract attention, uh, another tool to inform people about what's going on on the project. So, that's a summary of the project, um, and I, I have, uh, the next, uh, point is a discussion of some of the issues, and Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you want to stop here and do a Q and A about what I've said, or if you want to get through the, the discussion and do it again.
What I'm going to do is ask, uh, commissioners, any questions at this time? Or anybody calling in? If they can, any questions? Council, any questions at this time? Yes, yes.
I have a question. And, uh, uh, and that's, um, in, in regards to Ms. Alvarez's comments about the, the sphere of influence, sphere of interest that you mentioned earlier, these are maps, they go back to two thousand and fifteen. Is there anything more recent than this? Because it does indicate a, a sphere of influence, and it does indicate a, a urban reserve, and it, and it pinpoints an area of which I, I believe Ms. Alvarez is referring to, to leave properties alone. Is there, um, other areas that, uh, we're keeping as urban reserve? Are, can you explain that to, to all of us?
Sure. Typically, um, a city, uh, sometimes a county, but it's mostly cities in their general plan, will have a land use category called urban reserve, and that, and that essentially says, um, that's not in the city now, we plan on annexing it at some point and will be urbanized and will be developed. That's, so it's to reserve, um, areas for future growth. That's, it's based where the urban reserve is. The current general plan has that. That doesn't necessarily mean that the, the new general plan will have it. It's one of, I know that's been a really, uh, the, a, a big controversy about the extent of growth in Livingston, and that's what the major issue was surrounding the last general plan that, um, was involved in litigation. You don't, uh, general plans, city general plans don't have to have an urban reserve. Um, many do, uh, but others don't. It's entirely the city's choice as to how you want to, um, designate land, uh, within the, um, planning area.
And in the next few days, when you said that you're going to be having some Zoom meetings, you're having some stakeholders involved, I believe that's what you said.
Yes.
How many of them are from like our farming community that would have that input on the, um, because it's, even though it's two thousand and fifteen, it, it goes by, uh, at least year, two thousand and thirty, two thousand and forty, all the way out to Magnolia Ave- Avenue, which is a great part through Lincoln, what is included.
Let me answer that question. Can you hear me okay? Can, can folks hear me? Okay. So, as it relates to the stakeholders, uh, we have representation from across different sectors, but specifically to your point, in terms of how many, uh, or what percentage, uh, are represented, we tried to encompass just about, uh, all the big landowners that are adjacent to the city. And then we basically opened it up for others that might be, uh, not necessarily adjacent to the city, but might be in close proximity, that's so that they could provide input as well. So, a lot of the landowners from around the area, plus, uh, like, uh, school district representative, business representatives, so there's, there's different sector representation.
I understand, so, so to, can you hear me? Okay. So, the, our starting point is the currently adopted plan, and, um, the, if the urban reserve is not part of the plan, um, then that's not what we're starting with. It doesn't mean that it couldn't eventually find its way in there, but, um, the, that's not our starting point. Say again? The question was, is the plan we're working on, the currently adopted nineteen ninety-nine plan or the court set aside plan? And the answer is, it's the currently adopted, uh, nineteen ninety-nine plan. It couldn't be the court set aside plan because that's been set aside by the court. Okay. Other questions?
If I, if I want to, if I want to ask from the public, have any questions? Uh, please continue.
Yep. Continue. Thank you. So, this may be a little challenging under our current circumstances, but, uh, we wanted to kind of give you an opportunity to give us some early, uh, uh, direction and thought about, uh, some of the, uh, issues for starting point in the general plan. Uh, what, once it's complete, what would, what we described as, uh, being successful? If you, what are your expectations for a successful plan? What are the key issues, uh, that we should be, uh, addressing? What are the opportunities that, uh, the city can capitalize on for the project? And, um, if you've heard me talk about the public engagement steps that we're going through, if there are other, uh, ideas you have to more effectively engage the community, uh, we're interested in hearing that so we can, uh, in, add those to the process that we're already, um, including. I should say that Amy Yang has been listening in, and she's taking copious notes, so I'm not going to try to write things down, but we are taking notes.
Can I see any questions? This is informal, so you can ask questions anytime.
Um, so, we're, we're starting the discussion about, the discussion items. To me, what, what we feel is complete at the end of the process is just, uh, trying to involve as many people as possible from the community. Um, and then in regards to that is, yeah, like, landowners around town, uh, like, um, lady mentioned earlier today, the Men and I community, um, you know, just the, the different groups that are stakeholders in the community, um, to see what they have to hear and really listen to what they have to say. Um, so that would make me satisfied at the end is that everybody was given the opportunity to really, uh, you know, um, have an input. In regards to, um, how to make sure we engage everybody and besides the social media website and all of that, I think, uh, you know, obviously, considering the COVID-nineteenth situation, uh, and events that we have, um, festivals or whatever, have a booth out there, uh, with information and, and engage the public in that way, I think that'd be a good idea. And I don't know how far do we want, I mean, we can go and have volunteers, go, go, go to, you know, home to home, I don't know if that's too far, but, you know, maybe something like that, try and engage the public. Um, but I think the whole idea about sending flyers or information on the utility bill probably captures a lot of people and makes sure that, you know, it's in every language on, on town. In regard to just general, uh, generally speaking, of course, we want it to be a smart, responsible, uh, plan, considering, you know, smart growth, um, and make sure we look at what areas we could expand on. Obviously, we always look at the two exits, uh, what areas of those two exits, uh, you know, need more attention. And besides, of course, wanting more businesses in town, but also be responsible in regards to housing, uh, so multi-living housing, affordable housing, and even, um, I know there's always been talk about, uh, housing with larger lots, um, uh, so that'd be something to have a discussion. Those are just general thoughts.
Thank you.
One more thing, a couple more things, sorry. Um, one thing that's important to me is having, uh, an opportunity for, for open areas, for example, parks, uh, everybody has, so everybody can have access to outdoor activities, um, recreational opportunities, um, so environmentally friendly and recreational friendly would be important, too.
Ava, um, in regards to the upcoming, the twenty twenty census, how, how are you, um, guys going to analyze through that information that, that we gather and use it towards our population growth? What's trending, you know, what populations are, are, are we best serving and, and is everybody inclusive of it? Who, who's doing that?
Well, um, it's a good question. You know, we're at the, we're, we're, the population base information that we've been using for planning is now ten years old. Um, the, it, it really depends on, um, what information is available, uh, as the, the census results become available. Typically, you get very limited, uh, numbers early on, and, um, um, the analysis and the details behind the numbers and, uh, the greater level of information takes a while to come out. And I don't know, I, I just don't remember, uh, when we had the twenty ten census, how mu- how long it was until we had really good, detailed census-based information to do our work, but it's at least a year. And if you think about the schedule for this, we're going to be a bit down the road now the, uh, when the, the census information begins to become available. So, we'll do, we'll do the best we can, we'll use the information, the best information we have available as it becomes available. But we ourselves don't generate any of the census-based information. We take it and use it and apply it.
I just want to make sure that, that as I'm going through your actions, um, that you gave tips of your scope of work, is that, you know, that you pay attention and, and real cause and sin of, of some of the state laws that Ms. Alvarez mentioned, um, as they, as we work through the areas that potentially want to develop, um, and just safeguard, you know, our community as, as many of us lifetime members know Livingston. And again, I, I am supportive of, of the new, the new things that Ms. Aguilar had, had spoke about, you know, recreation, supporting the things that, that the community is, is going to need and, and, um, their input. And again, uh, you know, a, a need assessment, I don't, I don't know where, where that step falls in or anything, but again, these workshops, I, I encourage the public to, to come out for them because we do need to hear from you. We can't make sound decisions without your input. Um, and again, just knowing who are, who, you know, for us, we're, we're already up here, but our other stake, you know, the stakeholders, the community as a whole, to participate, it, it, it's important, it's, it's a lasting project set up for thirty months. So, again, I encourage you to bring your input because there are a lot of things that, that I would like to see in Livingston, but again, I, I work for the people of Livingston, so, thank you.
Mr. Wong?
I'm sorry, cut this one, we'll be again. Just one observation, I don't know how many people live dialed in or watching. The slide presentation is great if you only speak English, but we have a large population that speaks Spanish and Farsi. If you would have added a couple more slides, you could have had it underneath in the other two languages, so everybody that dialed in would have a better access and know what was going on. This is my personal opinion, but I think it should have been all three languages.
There's a couple of other, uh, there's, one Aguilar again. Uh, a couple of things, too, to consider, or I want to make sure we, uh, we consider is the public safety in mind, um, our fire department, for example. I know we're already behind, shout out to the guys like that. Um, in regards to maybe, uh, you know, be smart about, uh, planning for a second station, obviously, we still need a first one, or updated one, but, um, considering that, um, you know, be smart about that, where, where are we going, where in town, where we're growing, uh, a PD substation, you said, like? Um, so, you know, just consider putting, or having that into consideration, um, just like considering where the town is growing and response times and all of that. Another thing, too, very important is that, uh, uh, two of our volunteers from the fire department are here, but I would like to make sure, so you reach out to them, because I know they have a lot of, uh, input and, um, obviously, been living here for a very long time. have a lot of input and, obviously, they've been living here for a very long time, so they could have very good ideas, so reach out to them when we have those workshops. And also, business owners, I know that we talked about sending flyers or whatever, but make sure that we go face to face and talk to the business owners and tell them the importance of coming to those workshops.
Anybody else have any questions? Ms. Agler, anything else?
That's it. I'm the only one that's gone through this twice. Originally, we were working on the Mennonite general plan and the one that was not so successful. And to me, to everybody that's listening, planning commission, council, do you think water rates are divisive, which will you work on the general plan? Are you going to meet people out there that say we should end at the high and head into everything else and there'll be people saying, no, we should not do it all? The decision is going to be, and the wise one would be, to find some sort of a happy medium somewhere. As we, as I said before, no one that does not want to be in the city is going to be forced against to the sea, can't. I don't think anybody should do that. What we at Livingston also must learn from our previous mistakes, one was that we didn't get the stakeholders involved in the very beginning. We made that mistake with our water rates back in 2010. That was, didn't go very well and we learned from that. What we did was, just like we're doing here, is to have stakeholders involved in the beginning. And when we do get the people in there, we've got to make sure that we have the farm bureau because we need them. There may be more lips not plod on even a square foot or anything, but you've got to have them. They do represent a certain number of people out there, but we also got to have the business community. I do not want to tell somebody that's adjacent to Livingston that you cannot come into the city. If you feel that you need to come in the city and you have a plan to, whatever you have, whatever your dream is, to build homes, to build, whatever it is, let us know what you're working on, it is your land, just like we don't want to tell people that own the land, you have to come in. We're not going to tell the people, hey, this is your land, then you can't do anything with it either. They have their same right, when you're the landowner, you have that right. And that's always been the challenge. We cannot let a few individuals dictate the entire thing. We've got to really get out there like Ms. Agler said, get the community involved. Everybody in here, planning commission, council, we know a lot of people. And we've got to do this and we'll do this right. So, Ms. Mayor, are we going to have a stakeholders committee? And how are you inviting, which sections are you inviting again? I know you said it, but go ahead and say that again.
Yes, Ms. Mayor, you're absolutely right, we want to make sure that this process is an open and transparent process and this is going to, this is a living, breathing document that will continue for a while. So, if there are names that either planning commissioners have or the council, or just the general public itself, that want to be engaged, like everybody's been saying here on the council and on the planning commission, you're welcome because the more input, more, more community engagement, more civic engagement, the better, more robust product that we're going to have at the end, that will definitely benefit everybody. So, we are, we have stakeholders from all sectors and there is no limit in terms of how big it could be, you know. We want to engage them all, we want to interview them, we want to have them to ask questions and we will certainly, you know, be able to orally and also in written format, be able to present to those segments of the population who have a little bit of difficulty with the English, so we'll do the Spanish, we'll do the Punjabi, as we have for the utilities rates and other things that we do in town, so that's not a problem.
Yeah, I was approached by some folks and saying that our general plan is done and we're ready to, no, we haven't even started that. And, Ms. Governor, I'm, forgive me for mentioning your name, but if you wish to participate in the stakeholders, I, we send you a personal invitation, please join. You may, you may have, huh? You may have differences of opinion and there's no secret about it, but we do want to hear from all sectors, for people that are, will go all the way to people that are more cautious and I want everybody involved because we do need to hear from you. Just like we will send a letter to the farm bureau and to every property adjacent to us, come in, join, and let us know if you wish to be in or not. So, I mean, I'm not sure, council, if you have any other ideas to get this started, because we've got a long way to go, this is just to let me know what we're going to be doing. There's no decision. So, does anybody else have any suggestion on the stakeholders committee?
This is Ms. Agler. I think it's a good idea to include as many people as possible and not limit participation, but I think we already talked about possibly in the utility bill, besides sending that chart or maybe point person or who to contact and in regards to the committee, just what we talked about, reaching out.
Ms. Mayor, I believe we have contact information with all of the adjacent, how far are you trying to extend?
Well, at this particular moment in time, we basically have reached out to those individuals that are neighboring property owners and then all those stakeholders that we've worked in the past that maybe do not have any, let's say, adjacent property, but could be property that might be considered for annexation, you know, within the planning area, that whatever the community comes up with. And as it relates to the farm bureau, I've, I've, they want to have a, I've engaged them and actually, Mrs. Okui is part of the stakeholder interview list. And so, we're reaching out again to a lot of different stakeholders because a more diversified front is a better, better strength for us.
Thank you. Ms. Agler?
So, I know it was mentioned earlier and a few times that the general plan, one of the general plans was court got involved. Can you explain just a little bit, what kind of, really briefly, what happened to council members that weren't involved during those years?
Okay, so, I'll just go by, by historical information. I, of course, was not here. I don't know if the mayor wants to talk about it or if you want me to. So, I'm going to give it, I'm going to break it down for everybody. So, basically, what happened in the past, and the mayor alluded to this a little bit. Number one, there was, there was not any public participation from the onset of the, of the general plan itself. Number two, there was a premise that was used, how they came up with the number and where they came up with the projections, I do not know. And so, they proceeded to actually spend money and develop master plans that were planning for a community that was going to grow by 2025 by 100,000 people. Not even in the boom years, okay, did that happen, okay, to grow that much. And then, in addition to that, there was some landowners that were developing homes at the time that actually built some huge infrastructure on some property that was not even within the city limits or even within the sphere, with an anticipation of that growth that actually, some property owners, and rightly so, okay? And then, there wasn't, again, I'm gleaning this from all the information that I know that I read, there was no meeting of the minds and having some good dialogue. And because of that non-dialog, well, they used the courts. So, it went to the courts, once, it went to the courts, the judge basically ruled in favor or against what the city was proposing. And so, all that money and all that time was basically spent for nothing. And so, the city had no choice but to revert back to the 1999 plan. And that is what we have been using as a tool moving forward. So, fast forwarding to now, it's very important that we look ahead, that we learn from our past and that we engage the community from the very get-go and we try to put as big as a wide net as possible because stakeholders are not just necessarily people that live in the city, but people that have businesses in the city, people that have interactions with the city and that are in close proximity because this is a planning area that's going to be drawn up. And we don't know how far out, but that's why by hearing what our neighbors and our community investors, residents and different types of sectors want, we'll surely make it to the finish line. Maybe not everybody's happy, or, I mean, not everybody gets what they really, really want, but it's enough to move forward and really get the city going in the right direction and leverage their resources.
Thank you, sir. Make sure we don't make those same mistakes and include as many people as possible.
I can tell you what happened on your, oh. Okay, I can tell you what happened on your last general plan effort, will not happen. If you're familiar a little bit with it, I was actually working on the county general plan when that happened. Would I go? Okay. We, we are starting off engaging the community, we'll engage the community throughout this all, to keep you informed and everybody will have a chance to have their say about this and you will make the final decision, of course, but this is going to be an open participatory process that will gauge the full range of interests in the community and give you an understanding of what the choices are and give you the information you need to make a choice.
Anything else, Ms. Agler? Ms. Governor? You're off the quiet. And I'll figure it out. Thanks a lot. For me, I know you alluded to a little bit, there was a question regarding our master plans. At what point do the master plans come into play, where we have to do traffic plans, water, and what, at what point do we propose with the general plan?
Not to interrupt, but everything is muffled.
Yeah. Can I hear? Okay. I, I, you can hear you.
I'm sorry, repeat the whole answer?
Yeah, you can, uh...
Should I take this off?
Yeah, maybe easier.
Okay. It's rough having this appearing at the same time. Okay. Okay, so, infrastructure master plans follow the adoption of the general plan typically because the general plan sets the land use pattern, it's commercial, industrial, residential uses, the intensity of use, the density of residential uses, all of that is a basis for calculating, but water demand's going to be sewer demand, traffic demands. So, they follow the adoption of the land use diagram.
First, first, come to any other questions? Public questions? Scott? Chairman, go ahead, please.
What happened? December 10th, August 1st, they were getting dirt from the wastewater treatment plant and they were getting a lot of cash out of the city once they did that. They said, hey, we bought this land, let's develop it, it's farming. The city council went and they said, okay, we will put a sewer trunk line in there, people go and people, people, because it'll be less than a mile and we found 10 people. There were a couple of city councils, there were some back home weeks. They approved it, it was, a year comes and goes around, they say, hey, it's like this, we're going to start building. They start building, they never let the landowners know what comes out. They got an airbrush, they start pouring, they'll prove it. So, water resource board to approve it, never letting know the landowner had no knowledge of what was coming. So, we have this great device, big huge amount of dirt, people out there playing around, no, no structural things on this huge mound. It kept feeding somehow in the bathroom, the city council. Turned out, it was a 42-inch sewer trunk line they decided to put in. So, they are going on it and it's getting close to our property. I go to City of Livingston, I say, what's going on? This is droughty, scary. City of Livingston said, Merced County Spirit picture. Merced County said, City of Livingston's problem. Back and forth, I went for one month, not our project, not our project, we don't know, we don't know, we talked to the other guys. Finally gets red tagged by Merced County after they go past the one mile. So, now they violated their people's wishes. So, that was in January, February. I get chewed out by the Merced County Board Supervisors because I'm upset. Not only that, Tori Chan was the supervisor when he got through with the thing. Interestingly enough, she got tens of thousands of dollars of fees for being an independent consultant after she was done with the board supervisors from an entity of three developers across the country. So, when we went down the road, City of Livingston, boy, they passed it. After they approved the sewer trunk line, they said, wait a minute, we have to go to the airport, wait a minute. So, they have, after they approved the plan, planning commissions and council together and they have a meeting, they say, okay, we are now going to approve the plan. They were two weeks out from approving master plan. They were done, we didn't need to use 1997 master plan, they have, they have needed it. But now, they had all those, so this is January, February. City Council in October passes this wastewater treatment, the sewer plant, and they passed the wastewater plant. But when they voted on the pass, the pass is with a 30-inch sewer trunk line in the ground. It was already a 42-inch sewer trunk line barrier. So, that, we have to go back, we have to back our boundary again. Beforehand, there was a water management plant, so the numbers in the water management plant had a much smaller footprint. So, they said, wait a minute, we have a smaller footprint, we'll do, in this plan, we'll just change the watering. So, then they changed the watering. Now, we have the other 6-inch sewer trunk line in the mess of the plant, 42-inch sewer trunk line in the ground. Now, we have to do five, go back to the ground. trunk line in the ground. Now we have to do unresigned. So that's the drawing board. But now you're gonna have more people because you have to justify the power that people at State Department is supporting to ensure trunk line flow on the 2% gravity, 50% volume flow. I'm reading your reports, guys. I don't understand everything, but I'm at least reading. And you're up to over a hundred thousand people. Your water plan actually was wrong because it said needed 22 wells at a million dollars, all right, not a million, a million gallons to pass. You actually needed 44 gallons, and you're there if you have a water plan that comes through with that. All along, the land was in Williamson Act. The land was far away. We have no, I have 44 to the town, but there's a problem, there's a problem, there's a problem. I get documents after documents. I have 40 pounds partners tweet that we have, full of documents I turned into the city that are J-stamps of the problem. No one listens. The numbers have to work. 50 people on itself? That, I get that. But the numbers have to work. You can't build a city just making up numbers. You will have a disaster. And so I look like the bad guy. I say, this city, much money and much heartworth. Because you can't just do it saying, I want it. Our land is, we had no choice. What the city of Livingston did to us, we had to put our land in apartment conservation. We should never have to do that. And even with this, of our land conservation, you say, I don't know how you got a 2015 map in the 1999 general plan. That's 15 years later in my brain. Your 1999 general plan sucks if you do 1997 master plan. And the 1999 '97 master plan has even older information. What I hope to bring to the table, I can bring people up to speed real fast in where the problems are and what's going on. I like the idea of developing cities that work. Put businesses on the floor, put people on the top, bring your community together, get your neighbors talking, have apartments, have homes. I'm not even development.
Thank you very much, Ms. Alvarez. I'm sure those are different based on who you ask, but that's fine. We'll be okay with that. But we're gonna move on with this. I'm not here to debate with public. It serves no purpose. We have a clean slate. We need to move on. And just so you know, that pipe was not in the city, it was in the county, county. Cities do not get permits and the county, county does. And if they, if the older, somebody goes the line without city knowledge, without city permit, city is not responsible. So, and we know that, okay? So that was a little bit left out. City had, they shouldn't have permits because we couldn't. And that was between them and the county, and we'll just speak on every second of the day. So, the, any other, go ahead.
Okay. Again, the points were well taken. And I'll, I'll speak for myself. We, I am listening. And I want to just be able to say that it, as the, moving forward, the times that we meet with those workshops, it is very important that we do have our, Rodrigo, board of supervisors. We, we need representation so that we get the input and that everybody, we're not pointing fingers. We got a clean slate. We gotta do this right. So again, moving forward, making sure that we cover all our bases, moving out that way, past Lincoln, out this way, past Dwight. We gotta make sure that, that we're inclusive. And I, I think we've, we've reiterated that. We've, we've made that a point, that we need participation.
Any comments? Public, any comments?
Yes, this is Planning Commissioner Jason Robb. And, can you hear me?
Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. Only call it to you, the stakeholders committee. Hello? Commissioners, any comments?
Yes, Planning Commissioner Jason Robb. Oops.
There's not any, hold on. Who was that to ask a question?
Jason Robb.
Go ahead, Mr. Robb.
Just a quick question, and this may be for the city manager, but am I eligible as a planning commissioner to be a part of that committee?
You know what, we might, we might go with that answer top of our head. We'll have to get back with you on that one.
Okay.
The question was, as the commissioner, hold on, Mr. Robb, hold on. The question was, when Mr. Robb, the acting commissioner, can you turn on the stakeholders? We need to find out about that before we let you know about them. We'll check with, uh, we'll let you know, okay, Mr. Robb?
All right. Sounds great. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? I know one, we're in a German. Thank you.